15:459, we will open the meeting. You want to?
Um, Sam is not going to be here.
Yeah.
Because the office is open, we can start with, if I have you, a loading agent or whoever if you want.
There might be.
Oh, ready?
Yeah.
So keep your weight. Alright, starting at the top, 54, 911, request for assistance year-to-date, a little bit about last year, a little bit ahead of last year. Uh, thank you for taking my suggestions on that, uh, that time ordinance in regards to fall, repetitive false alarms. Uh, since you passed that, uh, there's been zero responses to, um, uh, to this upswing, so, you know what I mean? So, and then if Brett, was it him with it, I just kind of, as a matter of fact, you know, we, we, the government folks, we got to address it and all that stuff, so, not sure what they did down there, but it's working.
I think the gate's up, I don't know whether they're using it or not.
The gates are up on one side, well, the gates are up, but they weren't, last, they weren't using them, you know what I mean? So, uh, but they did install an access key, so we can reconnect it if, if we need to, so. Um, like I told you, I, I, I have zero intentions of ever using that, but it's a tool in our tool box if we need to, to prevent unnecessary responses, so.
Yep.
Sixteen seventy.
Yeah, yeah. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a, uh, a lot of explosion report up on Baptist Hill Road, we're on a Sunday. Ended up being people, um, playing with tannerite, some explosive, and makes a lot of detonation, uh, I think, uh, multiple calls from people in the area. We withdrew, there was, um, there was obviously no issues, um, but on the fire side, I did reach out to the, uh, state fire marshal's office, who put me in touch with the state police bomb squad to discuss the future use of, you know, our permits required or whatever, there's absolutely zero restrictions on the use of, and, and as far as state law goes, only use of tannerite, so, um, so I, I recorded all the property owner information and, you know, if we respond again, due to another complaint, uh, the gist for me is gonna be just, just be respectful neighbors, you know what I mean, type of deal, so, um, he seemed pretty receptive to what we're talking about, you know what I mean? But, uh, it's a little bit disturbing, there's absolutely zero restrictions on, on the use of that, so.
I got one up behind me likes to try it out.
Oh, really, the tannerite, okay, yeah.
I think you can hear it up on Borough, can't you?
Yeah.
Well, and we had, uh, we had free training when we contacted us about electric vehicle fires, as we get more and more electric vehicles, they present a whole different challenge, so, this resource is available to us when it happens, whether it's on a highway or in town, there's resources that are already in place that, that we can mobilize to bring in to help us with, you know, extinguishing or mitigating an electric vehicle fire, so, in a class of area. On the membership, then Nelson, the bachelor of transition is ongoing, uh, Herb is getting his uniforms, he's been drug shadowing Dave about, uh, five, five to eight hours a week, and when I say drug shadowing, it's kind of like, you know, the routine calls and the reports are fairly routine, but it's just everything else, the permits and everything that comes through our department, uh, deal, which is Herb is learning and completing reports and all that stuff, so, uh, he'll be coming in once a week, um, you know, that work side by side with Dave, so that's going well. We've underrolled the, uh, the scheduling process for the, the Perdian program, and that's worked really well too, we're getting ready to roll out the, the, it's eight shifts in April, that we have no coverage, like, as a reminder, Herb, this will be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, we've got no one, so, um, better be rolling up the sling schedule, when I say sling, that's the platform that, that we're completing this schedule on, sling.com, uh, and we're using that to make sure everything's covered, and it's been a fair amount of interest, I have all the shifts covered, so things, uh, things are going pretty well. And I reached out to all of our partners, I'm thankful that we have a great worker relationship with Loudoun Brook Rescue and Belmar, they've all agreed to, um, there's a bunch of red tape we have to go through with each department, but to allow Herb, if, when a medical incident happens in town, to access paramedic-level narcotics to make a difference in someone's lives, right now, we, we, we can't carry that, we're not a paramedic department, but they do, because they have paramedics on the ambulances when they come to town, so this would allow Herb to access their drug box to, to help patients, so that, that is actually gonna increase our service tenfold compared to where we are right now, as far as being able to save a life. And the way I did sell it to those, uh, to those partners as well is, you know, if you know Herb's on duty, and you don't have a medic and you need one, we'll roll your way too, you know what I mean? So it's kind of like, it's just not bad, but that's what helping them as well, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be very good, you know?
So, you mean, you're gonna start carrying these drugs, or you're gonna wait until they show up?
He's just gonna, in order for him to have access to their drug box, he has to be in, on their payroll, you know, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of red tape that we need, that, that we need to, um, complete with each department in order to be able to, you know, some training involved and stuff like that, so, we're working through that now, and, uh, probably, I would hope by summertime, beat that, that's all three of them. Um, member appreciation ceremony is the first Monday in, in, in March, um, invitations were sent out, uh, tent, yeah, um, and it's close to the library, uh, we're swerving in to four or five people that we've taken on in the last year, for recognizing hubs for his 25 years of service, and, uh, awarding the chief's award for member of the year, uh, and so the public is invited, and if you can make it, we'd like to see you. And we just used a new budget to upgrade our computer that Dave works on, which Herb is gonna be working on, it was a 2008 model computer, it still ran good, but was running Windows 6, so it was time for an upgrade, and, and we did, all within budget, still working on grants, today, uh, the 2024, uh, volunteer grant has been accepted, we got a thousand dollars of forestry equipment for that, uh, that's been awarded, and still working on the radio grant and this year's grant in HOES, those are moving forward, we just have awarded a regional home grant, uh, through the contact, we're picking up that stuff tomorrow. I've been reached out to, uh, by, um, a, um, a representative from the Capitol area public health network, what they're doing is they're, similar to the AED machines in the library and, and, and the town hall and fire station and all that stuff, they, their goal is statewide posting, putting a, a similar box that has, um, Naxalon in it, it's a, it's a drug used to reverse the effects of an overdose that can be administered by a bystander. So anyway, she's coming into my office next week, we're planning, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interview her, and if it's something that I think that town may be interested in, I'll bring it forward on the next meeting, so, um, that's all I have, and right now, I'm not quite sure what, what it's all about, but it's no cost to the town, it's something that's funded through a, through a, um, through a federal grant, and they have enough to do for every community, so. And working on the NASCAR race plans for June. That's all I have right now. Awesome, any questions?
Thank you.
Sam will not be here, um, picking up copies of, uh, over the taxes.
Yep.
He had nothing else to report, other than, this is just an outdated, uh, copy of what he got last month, so. That, you can see at the bottom of the back page, the timber tax is still overdue.
Yes.
Is that down in the interview?
Yes.
There's some questions on here.
Harvey?
Love rings, that's on here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Right.
This is really not in that check at all?
Not at all.
Just seeing my faces every time, though, you know?
Yeah, and it's, you know, if you can't be in contact with them, if they don't respond, you know, you can only do so much, you know? Technically, the tax collector can start going around and knocking on doors, but in this day and age, I don't think that's a safe bet, but you can't, legally, it's, it's, you know? Well, every three years, you pay the nearest tax, interesting.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or now, it would be a half a year.
They couldn't afford that.
No, well, who can? So, it's, it's kind of difficult when, you know, you do your job and they don't respond. John?
Yes, the one I was, it's on you.
How are you? Nature will not be here either.
Okay.
Well, we'll start with road postings, Mother Nature's gonna warm up next week.
Yep.
Gotta give some notice, gotta get it in the minutes. I've already contacted the logger up on Shaker and, uh, the local pets, so they know. I also, uh, reached out with an email to EverSource.
Saw that.
Okay.
So that's next week, you're posting?
I'd like to start Monday.
Monday, okay.
Even though Sunday night's a single-digit, that sun's coming out pretty hard.
Yeah.
And we don't know if we're getting rain or snow on Friday yet, we're on the line.
That'll be the 26th, then?
Yes. We've been out doing some coal patching, in the day I was taking a beating up by Scotty's, uh, workshop, something we'll address later in the summer. And that pretty much has to do with, I think, one, the road, but partly EverSource, uh, hauling the fiddleless choice, you know? Um, dealing with the nuisance storms that we've had, and had to remind the drivers that mailboxes have to stay standing.
Yeah.
Got a few missing out there, the gray has been out smoothing up the roads as the weather allows. Warms up too quick, it goes to slop, but, and we'll be doing more of that as time goes. Andreas has been out for a couple of weeks, Dave stepped in and, and took over, uh, that time. Uh, they all worked at the dump today, they shipped out 22 paper, 26 cardboard bales on a trailer, and that went up to St. Albans from off. Normally, we haul down Massachusetts, that was a little different.
Yeah.
And the baler heater is not working, it blew, uh, fuses.
Hmm, second time, right, Joe?
Yes.
It wasn't, it wasn't working Saturday when I was up there.
Yeah, I got a note from Callman David.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
He spoke with Larry Martin, the electrician, Larry is scheduled to be coming on the 25th to finish the wiring. Um, I will contact, I have to do cycling and let them know, they, uh, at our last meeting, we talked about the invoice.
Yep.
The repairs, I talked to them last week, and they said that they were gonna warranty everything, that it'll change everything. Um, I haven't talked to them since this weekend, let them know that the heater stopped working.
Yeah.
So, I'll do that tomorrow morning and let them know that thing's blown another fuse, and, um, the electrician's gonna be there on Sunday, so, we'll see what happens.
Yep.
It was cold, the tank was cold.
Yeah.
I bet, yeah.
Anything coming back at me?
Spring will come, in the end.
Yep.
Um, oh, I do have a 550, it's out pushing snow again.
Okay.
We'll get one storm out of it this winter.
Can I ask a question? On the heater, and, uh, will that company back putting in a new heater if that one can't be repaired?
Well, that's the second heater that they put in, so I would hope that they will still repair the second one.
I get the right heater.
It's a year, it's a year warranty on parts and labor.
Yeah.
Um, the, it was installed in April, so technically, it's still under warranty. I don't know what, why it would blow a fuse again like that, I, especially, it's a, it's a brand, um, a brand-new heater.
Mm-hmm.
That, the first one, they didn't know it had blown a fuse, and they didn't know why, so they changed it out, and, um, so this is the second heater that's blowing a fuse, so, uh, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Does Dad, Dave have any estimate, any guess of what may be going on with it, no?
Go clear, all, uh, all, uh, things that were done during the installation that our guys were taught to do are being done. So, as far as our, our operations, we're not doing anything that isn't standard, so.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Hi, John.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, John.
Uh, I've heard.
Um, I'll, I'll text away now, it's easier.
So, we do, we want to call signs, so.
Start on payroll, yeah.
There it is.
There it is, there they go.
Oh! They're fifteen minutes old, so.
Yes, they are, good evening, guys.
How are you?
Thank you, sir.
I'll sit in back. How you guys doing? Got a little rum show.
You got a tan now, or?
No, no, no tan.
No tan?
No tan.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
How are you guys tonight?
Good.
Good, thanks. Schedule, I'll do any questions on it, and they have, uh, email's reported behind it.
Yep.
State please cover four calls, uh, so far in January, a assisted fire, the motor vehicle accident, practical assist, and just says info, so that could be anything.
Yep.
I've got a question for both of you, the, um, I doubt that either of you were on the call, but the tannerite incident up on Baptist Hill.
Yeah.
There is no restriction on quantity of tannerite that can be used at any one time?
No.
Really?
Yeah, it's like loud noise, bang, boom.
It is crazy, that's, I mean, that's, I thought there was a restriction on quantity at any one time that could be detonated.
No, and it'll, it doesn't take much to make a lot of banging anywhere.
Agreed, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did a call, probably, at same place you were talking about a couple of years ago, on Borough Road, I think it was, and, and he was just using way too much, as it sounds like Baptist Hill was as well, so. Alright?
For whatever reason, people like loud bangs, I don't know why.
Same too, from time to time, anyway.
Chief, do you wanna talk about this, let it just stand it to me, or?
No, take a seat, I'm nervous, no. Sorry, I'll save that here.
I, uh, can't read my resignation today, I hope to be effective, March 21st, um, decided to retire from law enforcement, moved south for my life, it's been a pleasure, I appreciate all the opportunities I've had here, and hopefully, I did the job that I was paid to do for these last seven and a half years.
You only missed the voting the last time.
I'll be there this time.
We missed you that day.
I'll be there this time.
We got bets on, so we got bets on, see how long you stand.
Most of the day, yeah. So.
It's with regret, but I'm happy for you.
It is, it's, uh, it's been thirty years, so it's, it's, it's gonna be something totally different, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service, thank you.
Yeah, you've really done an amazing job here.
Thank you.
You will be missed, my friend.
Thank you, and you've got a good group.
Yes, we do.
Hopefully, we'll add one more before I'm gone, or at least we're in the process of.
Hopefully.
Yes.
Well, we got somebody on the cooker, or?
Well, we, we put the applications or, the advertisements out, uh, last week and the week before, so we'll give it a couple of weeks. Um, we're also trying to fill the admin assistant position too, so, we have more resumes for that right now than we do for the patrolman one, but, patrolman one's the same boat as everybody else, so, hopefully someday we'll take it, so, but we'll keep looking, we get it.
Yep, that's all we can do.
Yep.
Wish you well, man.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does the peanut gallery get to say thank you too?
Thank you very much.
The peanut gallery says thank you.
Thank you. Other than that, we'll get out of your hair.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. We'll think, I'll think a lot about you when I'm up here in the snow.
I'll be getting a tan then. My new job on there is not very heavy lifting, so.
What are you gonna be doing?
Um, I got hired to supervise and start a, it's a, it's a assisted living community.
Okay, yeah.
Gate, uh, anywhere from people owning their own homes, all the way to, um, uh, assisted living, basically.
Yeah, cool.
Um, so they, they pay a company to work their gatehouse and do their patrolling.
Yeah.
My job is to hire and train and evaluate the people that are gonna be working the gatehouse, so they're gonna work for the company that I work for.
Yeah.
And then to do the same on the patrol side, so they all work for the company instead of paying a contractor.
Understood.
So.
It sounds good.
Not heavy lifting.
Yeah. I'd say you've earned it.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you have.
Thank you, so it'll be different, but.
Yeah, you'll get used to it.
The hiring process is kind of weird when you go through a private sector compared to government.
I wouldn't know.
Yeah. Well, they, 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 we had went through it, uh, the overboard, and they said, okay, you're gonna have to do a background, and, and, I'm like, okay, so, conditional offer will come, I'm like, alright, and then they said, you give you notice, and I went, no. You just, well, we gave you conditional, and said, that doesn't mean anything to me.
Right, right.
They said, I still get to do this.
Not in the public sector.
I go, you didn't know, well, that'll be done in a week, I'm like, okay.
Safe to do so.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little different.
Yeah.
No psychological exam, one mistake.
Stay safe, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Good luck.
Good luck. Be the old ladies.
I will, I will.
We're tough.
So Lisa Carlson is on our agenda, Al is here, I have a letter from Lisa that I wanna read into the record.
Alright.
Um, Al, do you have anything you wanna say before I?
No, I'm allowed to start with.
Um, so, Lisa and I have had a couple of conversations about the, um, planning professional position, and, uh, she is ill tonight, and asked that I read this into the record, Cal, I'll give you a copy when, when I'm finished. Um, so, it starts, "I'm unable to attend this evening's select board meeting due to illness. I'm requesting that this statement be read aloud and entered into the minutes of the meeting." Thank you. "I was surprised to hear for the first time at the 5 February Select Board Budget Meeting about the proposed land use administrator position. By the information presented by Ken Folsom, the questions asked and the answers received, it is apparent that this will impact not only the work duties of the Secretary to the Planning Board, HDC, and Conservation Commission, but also that of the Board of Adjustment Secretary. Each board and commission has differing duties and objectives. It is unclear to me why no one at any time reached out to me specifically to ask for input or direction as to how this position might affect the Board of Adjustment or my duties as the secretary. The Chairman of the Zoning Board did not, no Select Board Member did, nor did the Town Administrator. I would like to suggest before any firm commitment is made to hire someone to fill this position, that the Select Board schedule a meeting to which the Town Assessor, Board and Commission Chairs, Interested Board and Commission Members and Secretaries are invited to meet as a collaborative body to discuss the impact and benefits of this position. Each board and commission has different operating policies, and it can do nothing but benefit us all to know at the same time what each other does and why, and how this position will impact the works currently being done by volunteers from our community. I would like to clarify the responsibilities of public noticing, the zoning board hearings and meetings has legal impacts. There are deadlines by which notices of decisions and meetings of hearings and meetings must be met that impacts the two-phased appeal process for applicants. I would certainly like the opportunity to interact collaboratively. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, Lisa Carlson, Clerk, Board of Adjustment." If you would pass that over to Cal.
Should've, probably talked more openly about that position.
Well, I was under the understanding that, that, uh, the secretaries were all on communication.
I thought they weren't too, but apparently they are.
So the only thing I will say, and I know your time on this board is short, but as, as we move forward, I think we really need to look at the leadership of the CBA.
I agree.
I just, my understanding is the Chairman was part of these discussions, and for whatever reason, didn't inform the Secretary, so, that's, that's distressing, to say the least.
Yep.
That's all I got.
I was just surprised that there was no communication between what I would consider her go-to person, you know?
Yeah, yeah, well, Joe is who he is.
Yeah, but still, it's your responsibility, when you take this on, to make sure that everybody knows this happened and these are the consequences.
Yeah.
So, um, you can take it, under advisement or whatever, and have a meeting with them, and.
Yeah.
If, if this, uh, decision is, it's, is it a line item, or is it in the?
It's in the budget as a line item.
Okay.
And I have the, um, job description here.
Yeah, I got a copy.
Just here, for you guys to sign if I, if some chose.
Yeah, I remember that. Al, do you have any input?
Yeah, I guess what I would say is, I think that, um, Ken, you spoke with, um, with Joe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, yes, it stopped there, it didn't go anywhere further, but, um, it would've been nice to have said, "Look, Joe, if you don't wanna be involved, then, um, you need to at least, um, advise and communicate to your board, all of the members, not just the Secretary." And I'm, I know one of Lisa's position is, "I would like to have this group get together, and let's talk, and let's work collaboratively," rather than have something be a total shock and surprise to her. So that's my feeling, that, "Let's just communicate better, and not just wash it off, but deal with it because it wasn't dealt with properly." I mean, she said exactly how she felt.
Something else?
Nope.
So. You have anything, Ken?
No, I don't think there's anything else I should say.
No, no, there, there isn't, and it, it's, it's up to the new board to have a discussion.
Yeah.
Once the town meetings put together, and, uh.
Why can't a group meet, uh, you know?
Oh, they can meet. But, we can go to a town meeting, and the voters per se, they're saying, "No, no, we don't know, we're, we're gonna change this, and, and make an amendment, or change the budget, am I correct? That they can do that?
Yes. Look at what time we leave for, so. Yep.
Question from the gallery, "So, just because that position is in the budget as a line item..."
Question from the gallery, so just because that position is in the budget as a line item, that doesn't have to be spent, correct? You don't have to hire this person by any particular deadline, correct?
And and for whatever reason, we may not get a person, but it's a line item, should we get a person?
So it's a placeholder, kind of like opening a, you know, a savings account for a position that you're, you want to fill, but you haven't yet.
I'm not sure I agree with that, Beth, I don't see it as a placeholder.
No, it's it's a natural.
I see it as a position that we want to fill.
That that's what I mean, but you don't have to spend it by a particular time to a particular person. It can wait there for a couple of, you know, it's money to be spent for that position.
Agreed.
As yet to be fully defined.
Right, but with the changes to state law that took place in twenty twenty-two, I think that was probably the impetus for this because the boards are now required to act on things within specified time limits or else.
Correct.
Um, so that, I think, is where all this came from, um because there, especially with respect to planning, there's there's so many moving parts now, and they all became time sensitive. So we.
Oh, I'm sorry, out of curiosity, have things not been happening in a timely manner?
I would say in my time on the planning board, we struggled to meet deadlines, is probably a an accurate way because as most things in town, it runs on volunteers.
Yes.
And and that's sometimes not not the best way to meet a deadline.
Indeed, but I know not speaking for planning because I haven't attended many planning board meetings, but I know for board of adjustment, they were very concerned about things being noticed properly and things like that, I'm assuming Lawrence was too. So.
Absolutely.
From from the gallery side of things, it sounds like a good idea for all the boards to talk about how this person will be trained so that the the timing of this will be kept up.
So once again, multiple attempts were made to meet with the zoning board while I was on the planning board, and guess what the answer was?
Well, I can't comment on that.
So, as I said, I think that the incoming select board is gonna have to deal with with what I see as a fairly dysfunctional leadership of the ZBA.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anything else, Al?
Um, I would hope it just doesn't drop and nothing happens from now until.
It's not gonna drop, right, guys?
No, yeah.
No, no, it's not gonna drop.
Okay, and and Lisa wants very much to be involved and not hear about this down the road and not have had any input, input. She's been the secretary of the zoning for a long time, almost as long as we've been here, and she needs to be treated with respect.
Al, I would argue that we made that effort and the chairman of the ZBA failed to communicate with her, period. Well, I don't know what else we can do but expect that whoever chairs that board acts like a professional and communicates. That didn't happen.
No, and that's that's.
All right, I mean, it's it's after the fact, but you could have said to him, listen, if you're not gonna pass the information along, then we're going to.
We had no idea.
Okay, well.
That's the problem.
If they don't communicate with Lisa, they don't communicate. We don't know.
Yeah, okay, well, she said what she wants and uh take her seriously, I guess.
I'm just, and absolutely we do, but as I said, our expectation was that the chairman of the ZBA communicates with his members.
Yeah. Okay, um can I ask if you, just from the treasurer's point of view now, have you looked at the manifest yet?
No.
No, that's.
All right, then Cal will do her usual, if not, she would have given me the thumbs up.
Yeah, oh, great, no, no thumbs up, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Al.
I'm curious to know what else you're gonna be talking about tonight, any idea?
Have you got a?
The agenda.
Yeah, the agenda.
Uh, there's nothing, oh, well, there's the budget presentation preparation and then signing the land use professional job description, but besides that, it's just the administrator.
Okay, just regarding, yeah, I understood, thank you, good night, Al.
Night. Yeah.
Guess I better get my coat.
I think you might.
Did you got one?
Oh, here it is.
We're ready to sign.
Mm-hmm.
So it's payable man up.
If you wait like five minutes, they're doing the kind of available, and and the check through also.
There's there's a couple checks here.
So at the top is the salary check for the treasurer, Al doesn't want to sign his own checks, understandably, so um if you could sign the check on the top and then the payroll manifest is attached to it.
Oh, okay. So any other?
That's gas reimbursement, correct?
Uh, I thought it was the.
Yes, is it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what it's for. Signing a check for gas reimbursement for eighty dollars and forty cents to the treasurer and then a manifest in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars ninety-three cents.
Thank you.
We have a payroll manifest in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars seventy-two cents.
Can we give Al this check? Or what else are we giving Al?
Uh, as long as I know that the three of you have signed.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't need to take the manifest.
You don't need to draw the motion.
And I'll second that motion, sorry.
Streamline that process.
I'm gonna give that to Mary, right?
Yes.
Good night, Al.
Night, Al.
Bye.
And then we have uh two community power committee member appointment slips. One is John Snyder and the other is Lenore Howe. We don't have to make a motion on that.
Don't.
Can you get a, you put the date in, I didn't want to.
Okay, you got it, it means I gotta look and see what date it is.
Why?
Just refreshing my memory.
Then we have a yield tax levy in the amount of six hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. For map and lot, two forty-one dash oh one seven.
So moved, seconded. This one or this one?
This one. Then we have a land use change tax on map one oh three lot zero zero six.
Do we need a motion on that, or?
No. It's twos, two twenty-one, twenty-four, that's a lot of twos. Did you say twenty-one?
What, uh, twenty, okay.
It is a twenty, yeah, yeah.
Just a little second, yeah.
That's why I looked at my my phone, sometimes it is a little hard to remember, yeah.
That's why we got a smart TV.
No. Yep. I think there's two land use change.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's another one. This one, this, for the same map. No. Then we have another land use change tax of map one oh three zero zero seven in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. I don't think I gave you the amount on the last one, did I? I think it's fourteen twenty-one.
Yep.
He's out to the Sherwood or one oh three?
It is. It's me, yeah, yeah, cycle building.
Why, yes, it is.
We're gonna have new neighbors.
They build them this year?
I hope so.
Yeah.
Can't imagine they want to keep paint rent in Concord.
Yep.
They'll be good for the town.
Yes, they will, they're good people, though.
I think that's it. Oh, you've been.
Yeah, I gotta sign still, yep.
Minutes.
I mean, that's like, we've got a finish waiting. You didn't send them some?
I finished them about fifteen minutes before this meeting.
Under the gun.
Have you read them over? They look good, me and I make a motion to, as written.
Maybe just a minute longer ago.
Yeah, I do. You are doing something for this one, is it?
That is correct, yeah, yeah. Um, I'll talk after.
Yeah.
Tip our hand, supposed to be a surprise for me. All right, I'll second Kent's motion on the minutes.
Uh, I'm just gonna wait a.
No worries.
A little one.
We got shingles appearing on the lawn from the roof out here. You seen that, the peak is, looks like it's been picked up or something. I don't know if we need to do anything with it now or not, but.
Al, when's your turn?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have a couple of, one new business and one old business. Under new business, I received a fairly lengthy and detailed complaint from a resident who was going through the planning board process for a subdivision. And the complaint was about the planning board, lack of decorum, and some of the things the planning board was trying to um pass, or was telling the applicant they had to do. Uh, I told them I'd pass it on, I said, certainly this, the planning board has things that they do as far as, you know, granting a subdivision, and I said, I I really can't speak to that as far as conditions or whatever. So the zoning one's pretty clear is what what's required, so if you feel that planning board is being unfair, then that's something to talk to them about. Uh, as far as the lack of decorum, then I would speak to the selectmen because we have a selectmen's rep that goes to the meetings, and if there are outbursts or things that shouldn't be done at a planning board meeting, then then that, I would guess, is the the selectmen's rep would would speak up at that point, so.
Certainly makes sense.
That's, that's pretty much it, I figured I'd pass it on, so if you guys go to this planning board meeting and something happens, if there's somebody speaking out of turn, or isn't isn't following the kind of the rules of order, then um I hope that one of you guys would speak up, that's all.
Being the selectmen's rep on the board, I have been to every single one of them, and I have not seen anything.
Okay, great, I'm I'm just passing it on that that's what he said, so. But he's very, not not upset, not very happy at all with the process, he feels he's being treated very unfairly. Anyway. Uh, old business.
Actually, but before we leave, new business, I guess this would fit, is with the resignation of the police chief. Can we look at the job description as it's currently all written?
I can forward you guys a copy of the job description.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good, I'd like to, yeah, now's the opportunity.
Yes, yeah, if you want to make any changes to that, yeah, yeah, and um I guess we'll have to have a discussion on posting the job and and all that, so.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other new business?
Not new, I've got something under old, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I do too.
Um, under old business, uh, we have the budget presentation preparation, which is gonna be Thursday night. With Bob Steenson, he's gonna come in and speak with you guys and go over the budget. I have the land use professional job description here, if you guys want to sign it, or.
I'm probably.
I think I forwarded you all a copy of that one for you.
Yes, you you did.
Yeah.
Did you see anything that?
I didn't, I looked all the way through it right again, actually, because.
And we can certainly be, can be revised at any time, there's no.
I, so the only thing I want to say is certainly I'm willing to sign this tonight, but it sounds like there was a real breakdown in communications between the chair of the ZBA and Lisa, and we need to make that right. So you know, I I think that we we, the board, need to sit with her and and just have a discussion what she does, and I know she feels very passionately about doing a a good job with that position, so.
That's a that's a tough position because she's trying to get as much information into those reports as she can, I know.
Yeah, yeah, and and I'll always speak for myself that, you know, I I said this earlier, but I'm going to say it again, I am astounded that no communication took place. And that's very, very distressing to me.
And I'll second that.
I'll forward it.
There's that back, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, so do you want me to try and set up a meeting with? I do know that the secretary, Lois, is the secretary for the planning board.
Yeah.
HDC and Conservation.
Yeah.
So do you want her to attend this meeting or do you want to just have?
Yeah, I I mean, she's known about this and and been talking, I've talked to her a couple times about.
This this was, this was, I guess, pushed by the planning board.
Yeah.
Chair, I mean Greg Lee's side here talked about it.
Yes, he did, yeah.
Um, and as well as, you know, so I I can have Lois, ask Lois to sit in and try to shoot for the next meeting then, or?
That would, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, what, the first one in line?
Correct.
So Lisa and Lois?
Yeah. Okay, um, and then I have under old business on the repairs for this building, that was a contractor. He asked, he looked at it and he did not give me an estimate, but because this is all Hardy cement board siding, he asked if you wanted to stick with that or if you want to replace it with cedar siding, it would be cheaper. I said, my guess is stay with the Hardy plank, but I would ask you guys.
I think as long as we keep the water from splashing, that's what we're at.
Okay, all right, all right, I'll let him know.
Yeah.
We should look at the municipal complex too, because up in that corner where the two buildings come together, it's splashing.
It's been, yeah, it's been that way for years.
Not in the front, where the police station goes into the fire station.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I think that's all I have. I would like to go into an executive session to discuss a personnel issue though.
Understood, but before we do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Status of the sale of map one oh two lot thirty-seven, Steenburg.
Yeah.
Oh, you're still.
You took my line.
She contacted me, I got a voicemail from her, said she's agreeable to that and she will be contacting me to to do the sale.
Very good.
So we'll we'll set that up.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay.
So for me?
Me too.
Oh, I've got, can I ask you? I was reading the articles and the one on the Sam Lake Trust. The trustees will determine the amount?
Yes. The trust, the trustees of the Sam Lake Trust Fund are currently Citizens Bank.
Yeah.
They're the ones that determine the market value and the distribution.
Well, that's right, too. I forgot that, yeah.
That's, they're they're the trustees are the ones that determine, just like our trustees of the trust funds manage our trust funds, these trustees manage that trust fund.
And and it could be, you know, it could be as high as fifteen thousand.
It depends on the market.
Yeah, yeah.
Depends on the market, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Do you need a motion for?
To go into.